Good morning. Being 9:00 AM, I'll call to the McHenry County Board Committee of the whole meeting of November 14th, 2024, and Ms. Von Bergen will lead us in the pledge today.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, ununderground, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Kathy, could you call the roll, please?
Here. Carol Campbell. Joseph Gotamaller. Terry Greeno. Eric Hendricks. Carl Kaminsky. James Kearns. Matthew Kunkel. Teresa Meshes. Lou Ness. John Reinhardt. Brian Sager. Michael Shorten.
Here.
Michael Scala. Larry Smith. Gloria Van Hoff. Tracy Von Bergen. Kelly Wagner. Chairman Bueller.
Here.
Okay, with that, I'll entertain a motion to allow Mr. Shorten to attend remotely. Mr. Scala makes the motion, Mr. Kaminsky seconds. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against, welcome Mr. Shorten. Good morning. Before we get to the 2025 budget presentations for RTA, Metra and Pace, I'd like to recognize David Christensen and the McHenry County Emergency Management Agency for mobilizing to support the Red Cross's logistics efforts in responding to Tuesday evening's apartment fire in Woodstock. More than 20 area fire departments were needed to put out the fire, which sadly killed one person, put three in the hospital and displaced 30 others. Thank you to the brave firefighters who put out the fire before more people could be hurt, and thank you as well to the Red Cross and to St. John's Lutheran Church for assisting people who lost their homes. At this time, well wishers are encouraged to hold off on providing donations of items until the Red Cross can more fully coordinate with the families and understand their needs. In the meantime, the Community Foundation for McHenry County has created the McHenry County Crisis Fund to assist the families impacted by the St. John's fire and has donated the first $10,000 in emergency funding. This fund will provide critical support to the residents of St. John's, including shelter, medical assistance, and basic necessities. Donations to the McHenry County Crisis Fund can be made online or by mail or in person at the Community Foundation for McHenry County at 33 East Woodstock Street in Crystal Lake. I have a number of important items to share regarding the upcoming post-election reorganization of the county board. I'd like to start by congratulating the winners of the November 5th election and to thank everyone who ran for office to make McHenry County and this great nation the best it can be. Unfortunately, four county board members will be leaving us. We will honor them and thank them for their service on Tuesday evening. As a reminder, county administration has scheduled an orientation session from 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM Thursday, November 21st, right here in the county board meeting room. Besides the newly elected members, all county board members are welcome to attend, and I encourage you all to do so. The organizational meeting will take place at 9:00 AM Monday, December 2nd, when the new county board will be seated, and every member who was elected will be administered the oath of office by Chief Judge Michael Federer. The county board, in accordance with board rules, will also select its representatives to the committee on committees, which will meet at a time and date to be determined. And finally, I'd like to thank county clerk Joe Tyrrio and his dedicated staff for their hard work during a contentious election. Just over two-thirds of McHenry County voters cast ballots, and Joe and his team ran a tight and efficient ship. And thank you as well to Joe, county administration, and his board for having the wisdom and vision to fund the new election center. That concludes my remarks. As a reminder, county board members are invited after this meeting to tour the new memory care wing at Valley High Nursing and Rehabilitation. Next, do any members have comments for us this morning? Seeing none, we'll go on to public comments. Carolyn Schofield?
Turn it on? It's on? It's on? You're on. Oh, all right. Well, good morning. I'm Carolyn Schofield from Crystal Lake. And I first wanted to reiterate what the chairman had said, to congratulate everyone that had a successful election last week, and to those that will not be returning to the county board. I just want to thank you so much for your service. I obviously know the hard work that's put in and the dedication, and appreciate all that you have done for the county, and you will be missed, for sure. So I have a couple things this morning, and I'll keep them quick. One, as your McHenry County representative on CMAP, I wanted to thank Shaylin and Peter for coming to our workshop yesterday, although our board unfortunately was not as dedicated to attending it. We did have about half the board there, and they did an excellent job in presenting on the good work that's done here in McHenry County, sharing how the shared service coordinator position had evolved and the CMAP's contribution to that. So fellow board members, after that meeting, were very impressed with all the work that is done here. So kudos to all of you for supporting and continuing to support that position, and to Peter and Shaylin for the good work that they do. And secondly, as the county board liaison to the mental health board, I wanted to just say that while we were disappointed with the recent sales tax numbers that had been returned, we still feel comfortable with increasing our allocations this year by approximately $1 million, which will include the addition of a few new programs and the expansion of several others. So thank you to the staff that has done an excellent, to our staff at the mental health board, that's done an excellent job in reviewing our actual expenses and adjusting our FY '25 budget accordingly. And I appreciate the conversations that our staff and the county staff have had that will continue, that they have worked together and committed to looking forward and being of assistance if needed in the future. But we will continue to watch our revenues over the next year and look for innovative ways, such as our grant rider that we had added this year, which has brought back about $3 million to our network provider. So we will continue with the good work that's being done, and we remain committed to filling the gaps in services in the areas of mental health, substance use, and intellectual and developmental disabilities for all people of McHenry County. So again, I wanted to thank our staff and the mental health board and the county staff and the board members and all the conversations we had. So thank you.
Okay, next, we have our reports and presentations, and first, we'll have Leanne Redden from the RTA for their 2025 budget presentation.
Chairman, with your permission, I'll kick things off for the RTA here. Well, good morning. It's my distinct honor to serve as a McHenry County representative on the RTA Executive Board, and I am grateful for that opportunity, and thank you as board members and the chairman for your support of my participation. The past few years have been incredibly difficult, as everyone knows, due to COVID, and it has been, therefore, a critical time for public transit in our particular area. The service agencies of Metra and Pace, which serve our area of McHenry County, have provided, I think, vital transportation options as they have continued to work to meet previous ridership levels and move beyond that. In fact, as they have looked at moving to the future, they have worked very, very hard to develop flexible schedules, identify new fare products, and to provide innovative pilots that can be used to grow ridership throughout the area. Additionally, we're seeing more and more collaboration between the agencies themselves, the service agencies of Metra, Pace, CTA, and the RTA overall, and we are very, very grateful for that. We have therefore been able to adapt to the new needs and to work together to address how we can make things more inviting and more convenient and servicing to those who are in need of transportation. As you are very much aware, the next year represents a critical year, a very pivotal year for public transit as a whole, with the looming fiscal cliff that we have talked about in these chambers and in committees. We are looking to, trying to work with our state legislature to make sure that we are properly funded in the coming years. With the looming fiscal cliff, as the federal relief dollars from COVID do expire, we are going to be looking at a 20% budget hole that could lead to cuts as large as 40% of service and personnel. Those cuts would be devastating, obviously, for transit as a whole in the region, but certainly for those of us here in McHenry County who rely on public transit. In addition to the impacts that a smaller transit system would have on our road congestion, our economy and our environment would suffer. And I know that many of us here have a great deal of concern about the economy as a whole as we move into the future, and certainly our environmental impact. We believe that transit is the answer to address those pivotal areas to many of our greatest challenges, but to be the solution we know it can be, we must reform our funding structure. I hate to admit this, but the state of Illinois is the lowest transit funding state of any state with a major metropolitan transit system in the United States. And I think that speaks volumes as we look to restructuring our financing so that we can indeed provide the services which not only do we need, but our residents are beginning to expect more and more. So we've had a decade, truly, more than a decade-long cycle of underfunding, and we're hoping that that can be turned around. It's again been my pleasure and my distinct honor to serve with other members of our executive board and RTA, who I think are strong professionals, incredibly dedicated to the transit system and the work that our professional staff is doing. And I also want to thank our strong, very, very knowledgeable, very hardworking professional staff and all the efforts that they have made to continue to move us forward in the difficult times that we've had, but also to help us to vision as we look to the future and work with the legislature to derive solutions. So at this time, it's my distinct honor to introduce our executive director, Leanne Redden, who's going to talk just a bit more about the budget and the plans in the year ahead. Leanne?
I'm hiding behind you.
Good.
Thank you, Director Saga, Chairman, and members of the board. I really appreciate the opportunity. I am going to talk a little bit, I mean, as we're required every year to come and talk to you about budget, and I know you're going to hear from Metra and Pace after this, so I'll let them sort of talk a little bit more of the specifics about their individual budget. So I do need to check the boxes on the budget, but I do think it's important to spend a few minutes talking about, as Director Saga noted, the sort of the pending fiscal challenges that they're facing, and make sure you understand sort of some of the context and some of the implications of that as well. So I do have slides, and I will run through them fairly quickly. Hopefully, I can see my notes without actually having to wear my glasses. Yes, I've gotten to that point, which is kind of frustrating, but I like to be able to see people out there as well. So I do really appreciate the time that you are giving us today. Director Saga touched on this, but you know, the RTA as a region represents the full six counties, and while it's only 10% of the state's land makeup, it represents about 74% of the economic output of the whole state of Illinois. So in other words, it's the engine that drives the state of Illinois. And this metropolitan area, like any other metropolitan area in the country, cannot survive unless it has a robust transportation network, and a public transportation system is really a critical component of that, to really ensure that we're providing access to jobs, mobility, and really driving and underpinning that economy. CTA, Metra, and Pace are all providing more than 1.2 million rides on a daily basis. And so that is a daily basis, but when we also look at weekends, evenings, and special event type timeframes, their ridership is through the roof. They're all experiencing double-digit growth in ridership. So I think what that tells us is the system, if funded and supported, is continuing to grow and continues to support how we move around this region. With the support that we've got now is really being underpinned by the remaining COVID relief monies, and when that runs out, we will be facing this significant budget gap of about 20%. And that fiscal cliff hits us in 2026. So this is why funding certainty for us and the conversations with our state legislature are so critical that they continue to occur, and we have to have some certainty around that funding by really May 2025, so we can plan for the 2026 budgets. In 2025, just to touch on the budget, it's projected to have expenses, as a region, expensive of about $4.15 billion, just over 5% increase from the '24 budget. Each operating agency intends to add service in '25. Both CTA, Metra are budgeting for services above pre-pandemic levels, and Pace continues to add service and innovate with things like bus rapid transit and some of the bus-on-shoulder expansions that they have been providing, as well as really trying to continue to tackle that first-and-last-mile connection to the bigger mainline systems. So the agency ridership is also looking to get around about 80%, but if I, we can pass that down, and if you look at sort of Tuesdays, Wednesdays, Thursdays, and weekends and evenings, those numbers are either at or above pre-pandemic levels. A quick snapshot of some of the actual budget breakdown numbers. This donut here shows the various components of the revenue that come in to support the transit network. The largest share continues to be the sales tax, but I do want to just highlight that darker brown wedge that represents the COVID relief monies that are still remaining and really underpinning the operations of the three service boards. So when those monies run out in '26, that is why it's critical to kind of fill that gap. Otherwise, we are facing some pretty significant challenges, and I'll touch on those in a minute. On the expense side, the shares by agency, CTA does receive just over half of the monies. With Metra and Pace, the next two, with Metra, it's 27%, and Pace at about 15% collectively between the fixed route system and the ADA and paratransit services that they provide. The RTA as an agency is that tiny little sliver that you can barely see on the top there, that actually, though, is about 1.4% of the region's budget, but what that also encompasses is all the regional programs that the RTA supports, funds, and in service of the riders of the region, as well as the service operators as well. A quick look at the capital program, $9.5 billion over the next five years. It's a rolling five-year program that we have and always presents to you. It is a significantly larger number than in previous years, and that is largely because of the addition of CTA's red line extension, where they are leveraging $2 billion of federal monies into supporting that project extension. That's the red line extension to the south, the city limits, and basically the south side of Chicago. Just a quick look at some of the McHenry projects that are, and I won't touch on, go into these because I know the three, the two operators are here, but a quick snapshot of some of those. There's but service, capital projects proposed by Metra and CTA, sorry, it's been a long week. And I just want to also note that there's several projects that the RTA also invests in McHenry County, continuing to support projects in, with access to transit in Harvard and Cary. We also funded and supported a developer roundtable conversation with the village of Cary, and then continue to fund as well as support the MC Ride program across the entire county. So just a quick look at, we have a strategic plan, and Director Saga noted it, transit is the answer, because we do believe it is the answer to many of our region's challenges that we're facing, and some of the focus there. I think that some of the things that, it's not just a plan that we did and put on the shelf, but the three operators and the RTA have worked hard to actually deliver on some of those projects and ideas. Expanding the access program to, creating an access program, which in partnership with Metra and funded also with some monies from Cook County, have launched a region-wide, so every county is, every resident of every county is eligible to participate in this, which is reduced fares on Metra service for people that are experiencing low income or SNAP-eligible residents of our region. We have over 5,000 people that have signed up for that program, and CTA and Pace would like to expand and participate in that if we'd had additional funding available. We looked at a fair equity report to look at how the impacts of the transit system and how our operations really are impacting the economy and our region, both positively and negatively, and I'll touch a little bit on that in a few minutes. We also hosted a suburban transit summit a couple weeks back, where we actually just focused on looking at how does the suburban area get better served by transit, what could be some innovations and different things, and a great panel of mayors from around the entire region helping us kind of think through some of those issues and ideas. 2026, as I noted, is a pivotal point where we run out of our COVID relief monies, and we have sort of a choice to be made. We can either choose to invest in the transit network or we fall off the fiscal cliff, but the consequences are pretty dire. If, I think from our perspective, the message is clear that, you know, that if we spend and invest in the transit system, you know, the impacts, the benefits to our region will be great and really support the region's economy. If we don't invest in the system, we're really going to have to experience dramatic service cuts, fare increases, drops in ridership, and sort of the, you know, the ripple effect impacts that it'll have. Just to give you kind of a quick snapshot of what that looks like, a 20% shortfall in our budget does not translate sort of one-to-one in terms of the impacts. It's about a 40% impact on the services across the region. So if you're looking at things like, you know, suburban headways could go to, you know, 45 minutes to an hour plus in terms of waiting for a bus. That's just not reliable and really a way that people are going to really want to make the transit service attractive if we choose to, and Metra on a line that's carrying, for example, 90 trains right now, is going to be cut significantly in terms of the amount of service it will provide. You start to think about those ripple effects across, you know, both how people move, access services, get to doctors, get to education, get to jobs. It's significantly, a significant impact. If we choose to invest in the system and expand service, sort of the flip side of that conversation happens, a 40% increase in services. So on a Metra line where there's 90 trains now, those lines could actually be carrying up to 120 trains a day. So you start to see much more frequent service, much more reliable service, better connectivity across the entire network. Pace could provide, you know, 20 to 15 to 20-minute, 30-minute headways in, across the region, and that starts to present many more opportunities for how people can move around. And I think the impact in terms of jobs, we estimate that could result in about a 28,000 number increase of jobs across the region, but I even think if you never get on a bus or train, that's hundreds of thousands of vehicle hours that, you know, are going to be taken off the road if you don't, if you have more robust transit network. And that, I just translate that down, it's one less car, or thousands or hundreds of cars that aren't in front of you on the road when you're trying to get somewhere. So the fiscal cliff, it's a downward spiral. If we have to cut service and increase fares, it results in less ridership, which means we have to cut service and increase fares further. So it just becomes this vicious cycle downward that really is untenable, and you end up basically with a transportation network that really isn't that viable. So we've thought a lot and are planning, and Director Saga touched on this, our legislative agenda is busy, strong, and pretty robust over the coming year. This just sort of gives you a sense of some of the legislative deadlines along the way. I think it's important to, the key point here is, time is of the essence. As I noted at the top here, we have to have funding certainty by May 2025, so we can actually plan for the budgets ahead. If we, there is a lot at risk if there is an action, and I think that the three operators that are showing, as I noted, double-digit ridership growth, delivering creative and new services, that whole process, that whole momentum is going to have to do an about-face, and we have to, as federally required, go down a path of service cuts and fare increases and the whole public process of planning for that. And that's, we don't want to lose the momentum that we have. We would like to sort of continue on planning for a future and a robust transit network. I think in just some of the quick specifics on the legislative agenda, the key things are sort of filling that operating gap, increasing operations, and CMAP, and Carolyn touched, represents CMAP for you in this region, and their number of investing of up to $1.5 billion annually allows us to deliver that robust transit network that frankly taxpayers, riders, and legislators have been asking us to provide. We also want to eliminate the fare box recovery ratio for a variety of reasons. I can get into that if anyone has any questions. And looking to, at the bare minimum, have the conversation around fully funding the reduced and free ride programs that we are mandated to provide, those, and the ADA paratransit service. The collection of those services costs the region $400 million. The state is currently funding us about $27 million on that, those expenses. And so you start to make that investment by the state, that starts to really chip away at some of the gap that we are facing. We recognize that change and reform has to occur. We are not walking and talking with the state just with a handout for, you know, money and sort of no accountabilities associated with it. We know that we need to have a stronger focus on safety and security, public safety and security, especially in some of the more urban and dense areas. We have been leading the conversation to some extent region-wide about some of the elements that could incorporate, could be incorporated within that. Additionally, we know that there, as I mentioned, reforms are going to be needed, and we take that very seriously. Three key kind of core areas that we think are prime for a stronger, more transparent, and more accountable RTA, as sort of the regional entity, so rolling up some functions at that regional level, freeing the three operators up to provide, to do what they do best, which is deliver service, and think about how we can support them as well as the riders and the taxpayers in terms of delivering some additional services. And we think some of those areas incorporate kind of thinking about the fare system from a regional perspective, thinking about customer service from a coordinated and regional perspective. Setting service standards is a big thing that we've heard from the legislator in terms of defining, working with the three operators, and not sort of telling them the exact levels of service, but thinking, working with the three operators about what kind of levels of service are required in what areas, or should be expected in certain areas. More rural and less dense areas compared to, you know, the urban area in the city of Chicago, and then sort of funding accordingly, so people know kind of what they're expecting, what they're going to receive, and then the funding needs to follow appropriately with that. And then the RTA could sort of have that role of overseeing and making sure that everyone knows and is accountable for what is expected to be delivered. The other key area is in terms of capital projects and taking sort of some of the capital evaluation work that the RTA has already been leading to that next level, and really clearly helping to define what the region wants to invest in, helping perhaps prioritize some of those projects as we kind of advance those investments. So just to wrap up, we've got a series where around the region, talking in every county. We have a public hearing coming up on December 3. It is virtually It is virtual. I would encourage you to, any of your constituents or any social that you do, sharing that information out there, it's all on our website as well, to encourage people to participate and give us any input they might have. The three service boards are in presenting the details of their budget next week, and then the RTA board looks to adopt the final regional budget in December, on December 19. So with that, I will wrap up, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Mr. Scala?
Thank you for coming before us again.
Good to be here.
Yeah. My questions are, I have three different ones revolving around the fiscal cliff you talked about. So my first question is, the 700 million, has, that number has stayed exactly the same for the last three years. How realistic is that number? In the sense that a lot of things have changed, the dynamics of all three agencies have changed. I would, being a finance guy, I would say that 700 million is probably not 700 million anymore. So I'm wondering, what is the real number associated with that?
It's, I would say it's pretty close to that still. I mean, that, look, I could, I could make the point that month-to-month, that number fluctuates somewhat, right? But it's still in the $700 million range. It's, we've sort of stuck with the 730 number, just because it's, you know, mostly because the public and the media tend to struggle with if you're seeing these like fluctuations on a monthly or quarterly basis. I can tell you that when you add up all the numbers of the three service boards in the budget that we're considering right now for the region, it's just a little bit over that. And I think that's a testament to the three operators really understanding kind of what the budget is right now, and what the monies available are. It could be, and the fiscal, strong fiscal management that I think that they all provide. I think the easier way to think about it is, it's about 20% of the operating budget of the region, and that's, that's a given, that that's not going to change. So while it might sort of fluctuate a little bit, we have to have balanced budgets, so that's kind of another reason why it sort of stays the same. The other thing is that sales tax in the region has been, and I know Carolyn said it hadn't been as robust as maybe people had expected, but as a region as a whole, it actually has been very strong, even through, there was a sort of a bit of a dip early COVID, and then it sort of came back. And largely, some of that is because some legislation that both the federal government and state passed, that we're actually receiving the monies from some of the online sales, for example. But the economy has been pretty strong, and so we, that's sort of helping sort of bridge some of those gaps, if you will, as well as, and why we as a region have been able to stretch out some of our COVID relief monies longer, and we're not hitting, you know, the Pennsylvanias, New York, California, actually even large and small cities across the country have already hit some of their fiscal cliffs, we've actually been able to push ours out a little longer.
Okay, next question. So with all three agencies having somewhat unique needs and situations, i.e. debt and capital projects and stuff, who is, who is leading the charge down in Springfield to have those discussions? Is it, is it truly the RTA as the overarching group leading those discussions, or is it more independent as far as each of the agencies? Because I, I guess, you know, being McHenry County, you know, we don't even have CTA, right? So we have only two out of the three agencies. Naturally, our needs being at the end of the line, literally, you know, are different than other collar counties. But who's leading that discussion? Because, you know, we as a county hear a lot of discussion about what's going on, and, you know, well, we are demanding, meaning the legislature is saying, we demand this out of, out of the agencies before we give them any dollars.
Yeah. I guess I will say that from the transit perspective, I would say we're very much collectively working together, with the RTA trying to sort of coordinate and shepherd a lot of those conversations. So again, freeing up the three operators to sort of continue to deliver service, but we're all very much involved in those conversations. There's been nine hearings around, most of which, Ada, were up across the whole region up here, and then one was in Springfield with, led by the Senate. So we're very much engaged in both those public conversations, as well as a significant amount of sort of behind-the-scenes continued discussion, conversations with members of the General Assembly. The House has also taken a sort of a more, they've got more of a working group structure, so we've been, we continue to talk with them, all three service boards, as well as, and we've all presented to them sort of formally, and continue to be part of those conversations. I think there's a lot of other groups that are also talking and working, and Chairman can attest, we've also, I know that the county board chairs as a collective whole are very engaged in that conversation, and certainly made their voices known when there's been, you know, as most of you are probably aware, there's a, there is a piece of legislation that was pending to sort of, sort of consolidate everybody all into one mega agency, and the collar county voices were very strong in sort of saying, timeout, we don't think that that's the best solution. And frankly, that's a position that the RTA, and I think all three service boards, I don't want to speak for them, but we have all essentially taken. We don't think that one consolidation into one mega agency is the right answer. We do think that there needs to be some, there should be some changes, improvements, reforms, some efficiencies along the way, as part of, you know, the ask of significant investment. But we're focused much more on outcomes, you know, what are we trying to accomplish as opposed to what just, what's the governance conversation? It's no point having a conversation also about sort of rearranging all the deck chairs, if you will, if there's no system to fund. So we, it's really a funding challenge that the region is facing, but we recognize that there needs to be some reform, and we are trying to lead that charge.
Okay. And then the last question has to deal with, so I was going to bring up the piece of legislation that's currently out there, because that's technically the only thing that's out there right now. And it seems like in the, in the spring session is when something, from what you're saying, is going to have to happen, because you can't wait till, if it doesn't happen before they adjourn at the end of May or whatever it is, then you're saying, you know, you can't wait for the veto session to happen, because you have to have budgets done before that. So given that, what do you feel is the likelihood that there will be some financial relief provided by the state in order to meet the needs of the three agencies?
I am cautiously optimistic. I mean, that is our goal, and that's what we're working towards. The continued voices from the county board chairs, from mayors, to that point, I think is going to help in that conversation as we, as the spring session ramps up. You know, there are some people that, some within the General Assembly that are talking about sort of lame duck in January. I'm not sure that there's a consensus amongst the General Assembly to move that fast, but I'm cautiously optimistic that something will happen in Springfield before we get to adjournment at the end of May.
So the soup's not ready yet, right? Is that what you're saying?
Pardon?
The soup is not ready yet.
Well, I would, I would say there's, there's also a lot of conversation happening now about, like, the reform list that I sort of shared with you. We're continuing conversations with the legislature about what that could look like. And so there's, and I know that there's conversations amongst many others about, could there be alternative legislation drafted? So there's a lot of conversation happening about what that might look like, and I think we all sort of stand ready to be, at least from the transit agency's perspective, part of that conversation, to be a resource and hopefully support them in both funding the system, but also achieving the outcomes that we're all looking for.
Okay. Thank you.
Any others?
Just quickly, so, you know, I read an article yesterday that states projected budget deficit is $3.5 billion, as it is. Adding another $1.5 billion on top of that annually would certainly be a significant challenge. Are there parallel conversations going on with our federal representatives to try to acquire funding? Because this is not a unique situation to just our region, it's nationwide in all the metro regions. I mean, are those conversations being had, or is that something the RTA would do, or is that a state thing where they would need to approach the feds?
Uh, no. Yes, the RTA has had that conversation, and actually, I sit on the National Board for the American Public Transport Association, and we just had our executive meetings over the past weekend, and a lot of conversation about sort of the agenda and the strategies and the approach. So these, those conversations, you know, that's very much front of mind. I think, just to explain, the federal government does not provide any operating support to public transportation, large, large, only the very small sort of rural-type systems that they provide funding for. So our monies that we get from the federal government are essentially sequestered and sort of siloed into the capital side. But that doesn't mean we won't have that conversation. I think some of the, there's some unknowns and some changes, obviously, with the new administration coming in, and how that will be received. I think from the public transportation perspective, you know, our point is, public transportation drives, you know, states and regions, large and small, their economies, and so it's an important investment to be made. So we'll continue that conversation. I'm not super optimistic that there will be federal, sort of federal relief monies coming towards operations side of things.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Next, we have the 2025 Metro Budget Presentation, and John Morris is here to speak to us.
All right. Okay, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, McHenry County veterans, residents, and guests, good morning, and thank you for the opportunity to present Metro's operating and capital budgets for 2025. We'll start with, okay. First, we'll start with the operating budget. The operating budget is projected to be $1,135 million. And in this budget, we are looking to hold fares steady for 2025. So we just implemented a new fare structure early this year, and we're going to hold that into 2025, through 2025, excuse me. We're going to look to utilize strong sales tax revenues and part of our remaining amount of federal COVID relief aid. So we'll be looking at $593 million in regional sales taxes, $238 million of federal COVID relief funds, and $304 million in system rated revenue. The bulk of that comes from fares. The remainder comes from things like advertising, baggage fees, investment income, but also we get a substantial amount from the Northern Indiana Community Transit District, or NICD, which is doing a major project downtown, so they're paying us to do the work, and it's about $65 million in 2025. We're expecting to see ridership go up 7% from our 2024 ridership, so we are still well below our pre-pandemic ridership. Return to office and hybrid work patterns are slowing down the growth from what we had originally thought when we put together the budget in 2024. The operating budget basically is about 4% higher than the 2024 budget, and the biggest driver is inflation. We also have some contractual increases, we have some federal mandated safety requirements, and we have some market increase in some of the materials that we utilize. This is a look at the budget. I won't go through this directly, but it gives you a chance to see how it lines up. As you can see, if you look at the last column, where you will see that we will wind up having a $238 million deficit, but we have sufficient federal COVID relief funds to cover that in 2025. And we're looking to see $93 million of that go into 2026. But as LeAnn mentioned, that's going to be insufficient in 2026 to cover the shortfall, and that's when we will experience a fiscal cliff in Metro. Our capital budget is $366 million, and it's funded primarily from federal formula funding, that's about $242 million. We've got $29 million in federal congestion mitigation and air quality funds. We get $87 million in Illinois pay-go funds, which are mostly motor fuel taxes, and we get $6.5 million in RTA ICE or Innovation Coordination and Enhancement Funds. We fund 108 projects, broken down principally into rolling stock. As you can imagine, we have a lot of old locomotives and rail cars that we rehab on a frequent basis to keep them safe and functional. We have bridges, track and structure, we're spending $102 million on, and you can imagine we have 446 Metro-owned bridges, some of which are over 100 years old, so we work on those. Signal Electrical and Communications is $39 million, Facilities Equipment, $57 million, Station and Parking, $35 million, and Support Activities, which is, a lot of that is things like project management, professional project management of, of the work projects is $40 million. When we look at the five-year capital plan, it's going to be about $2.1 billion. And 46 of that percent of that funding, basically is new rail cars. We're looking to get rail cars from Alstom. They'll be the first new rail cars we've had on the non-metro electric lines in decades. We're looking to get a zero-emission train set. You may have heard about the Statler battery-powered car set that we're looking to get. We're getting Nippon Sharu HL2 rail cars rehabbed, these are on the Metro Electric Line. We're going to rehab the Amorail rail cars, and we're also going to take a serious attempt to deal with our aging bridge infrastructure. Director Kaler was unable to come here today, but he asked me to share with you some of the information about capital projects happening in McHenry County, and LeAnn had posted there were two. Crystal Lake Signal Renewal, we're looking to allocate $2.5 million to do that, and it's going to be at milepost 43 on the Union Pacific Line at Crystal Lake, and we're going to renew the signal system at that location. We're also looking to put together a Pingree Road Station, that's about $2.4 million, and that's in Crystal Lake on the UP Northwest Line, and that's going to include rehabs of the station's platforms and improvements to the ramp, and that's for addressing structural deterioration and making sure we're compliant with ADA accessibility requirements. We're also going to look to fix the station's retaining wall, and we're expecting to do construction in the 2025, 2026 timeframe. This is going to be managed by Union Pacific Railroad, and they're going to be using their crews to do the construction on it. Another topic he asked me to cover is the Woodstock Rail Yard. We only have funding for this to really do preliminary engineering in NEPA, which is, NEPA is the Environmental Approvals with the federal government, and that's looking to be completed in 2025. At the time, we don't have program funds or timeline for construction, but we're evaluating a couple sites. And in part of this research, we held a public meeting on March 21 in the city of Woodstock. 64 people attended, we had 19 written comments received, eight supported the project fully, two opposed the project, two only supported Site 1, which is the site east of Lamb Road, and three supported Site 2, which is west of Lamb Road. Some of the other comments were concerns over noise, landscaping, traffic improvement, road improvements, and environmental impacts. So our capital delivery team is currently working with McHenry County and the city of Woodstock to continue to gain data on the traffic and the planning considerations for the sites. We're going to continue to do site visits to investigate biological and water resources, and we're going to schedule a second public meeting in the fall. Now, are there any questions?
Could you go back to the one slide that listed the capital projects?
Certainly.
It was about the second or third slide.
Oh, all the capital projects?
Yes.
Okay. There you go.
Okay, down under Capital Project Funds. Okay, down under Capital Project Funds. Can you explain what rolling stock is, the $93.8 million?
Yeah. Rolling stock is locomotives and rail, the rail cars. All right? So a-anything that either moves the passengers or contains the passengers.
Okay. So, and we're okay for all of those capital projects as far as for 2025?
Yeah.
But 2026 is when we get into trouble, is that right?
Uh, we have to think that there's two different budgets that we're talking about. We're talking about, there's an operating budget, which is taking what we have and running it every day. The capital budget is funded separately, and those are things to maintain the structure, buying equipment, fixing bridges. That is funded separately. And part of that is funded by the federal government and the state government. And we adjust our funding, basically based on the funding that we're receiving, both regular funding, and then we seek grants to do additional work. All right? So that's separate. The fiscal cliff is not really addressing the capital. It's addressing running the trains every day.
Okay, so I'm specifically interested in COVID funds. So we have enough COVID funds to fund the projects that we've allocated it for, for all of 2025. Is that right?
The precise thing is, the projects that we're doing in 2025 are funded by the federal formula funds, the motor vehicle taxes, and a couple other grants that is separate. The COVID funds fund the operations that we're going to be doing in 2025.
I see.
Running the trains. That's the, that's our fiscal cliff area of concern. We can always, we have vast capital needs, and if we had more capital money, we would do more. But the issue that LeAnn is talking about is actually the everyday running the train service that people need every day. That's where we're having the fiscal cliff issue. And that's where the COVID funds, the federal government gave us money, which is not usual, to run operations. And we've worked to use that stingily as we can to extend it into 2026.
So the projects that were listed at Pingree Road, and then there was one other one in McHenry County. How safe are those with, as far as being able to get those done?
Those should be done because that's on a separate budget. That's a capital budget, so that has nothing to do with the fiscal cliff.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no further questions, thanks for coming today.
Okay. Thank you for the opportunity.
Next, we got the 2025 PACE Budget Presentation. That's Erin Smith. Thanks, Erin.
Thank you. I do not have a presentation. I'm just going to have a conversation with you. Good morning, Chairman Bueller and members of the board. My name is Erin Smith, as you said, and I represent McHenry County on the PACE Board of Directors. 2024 has been a transformative year for PACE, and our ability to adapt has been our greatest strength. Over our 40-year history, we have consistently evolved to meet the needs of our riders, but 2024 really stands out. Fixed route ridership has surged 20%, the highest it's been since the pandemic. And ADA paratransit ridership is now 8% above pre-pandemic levels. These numbers reflect more than just a return to normal. They reflect a transformation in how PACE operated, how we serve our riders, and how we're shaping our future, the future of transit in our region. We know that commuting patterns have changed, and so we have too, ensuring that PACE remains vital to the economic health of McHenry County. Before I address the budget, I do want to share with you several innovative steps PACE took this past year that have fueled the resurgence. Thanks to continued investments and partnership, we've been able to add more service and provide fast, frequent, and reliable transportation for our riders. And so I'll give you a few examples, some that are relevant to McHenry County, others, but not all. One that is relevant from McHenry County. Our ADA para, as our, for ADA paratransit customers, we took a major step forward by launching the Ride Share Access Program, otherwise known as RAP. This expands mobility options with Uber and U-Serve, another company like Uber, as a ride-sharing service as an alter, alternative to dedicated ADA paratransit services. And I do want to provide a couple more details because in conversations, I'm not sure everybody's really aware of this service. But if you are a certified ADA rider, you can call an Uber ride or a U-Serve ride, and PACE will reimburse up to $30 per ride. It's a $2 cost to the passenger. So it's very affordable in terms of providing immediate access to transportation for our paratransit and ADA certified, ADA certified riders. And that's available in McHenry County, and I'm pretty excited about it because I think it's well-suited to our, our geography. In areas where demand doesn't warrant traditional fixed routes, which is many in McHenry County, we have adapted by adding more demand response services in some areas to meet the first-last-mile needs of our riders. And it's worth calling out that we're, again, providing county-level grants to each of the five Coller Counties, including McHenry, to support countywide demand response services like Dial-A-Ride, or MC Ride, sorry. We also continue to improve fixed route transit in high-demand markets through the region. These efforts reflect PACE's commitment to innovations and service improvements, all with the goal of providing our riders with the best possible transit experience. So moving on to the budget. The 2025 Suburban Service Budget for PACE is balanced with no fare increases or reductions in service. The funding requirement of $287.5 million is funded by sales tax and other public funds. However, a $41.4 million shortfall in sales tax and operating revenue will be covered using the federal coronavirus relief funding. PACE ridership is projected to increase by 6.1%. The 2025 budget includes expanding service options for our riders by adding fixed route transit in high-demand markets, expanding on-demand services in some of the other counties, and improving weekend and late-night service. Last year, you might recall, in coordination with the county and with the city of Crystal Lake, we adjusted our fixed route 550 trips to operate via Virginia and Northwest Highway in Crystal Lake, which did increase ridership. Throughout the year, PACE has been committed, has been, has committed more resources to local fixed routes. We now, we're now back to 2019 pre-pandemic service levels. These investments that we're making now are to ensure riders have stronger access to jobs, education, and essential services in the area. And PACE is looking forward to continuing our positive post-pandemic momentum in 2025. We're coordinating with the RTA, Metra, and CTA on the Regional Day Pass, which provides unlimited rides on PACE, Metra, and CTA for a, for a single fixed rate. By offering flexible and cost-effective fare options, we will continue to attract new riders and provide greater value to existing passengers. We'll also get to continue to support innovative programs like On Demand and VanGo. PACE launched its first VanGo program in 2023, and since then, we've expanded the service to four zones. I want to pause on this point because there is no VanGo program in McHenry County. The VanGo program, I think I talked a little bit about last year, but again, I think in your, in your respective areas, I would encourage everybody to have conversations with local mayors about whether or not having a VanGo bus or multiple VanGo buses at the train stations makes sense. If you're a business owner, for example, you can have a dedicated PACE VanGo bus that PACE maintains, provides fuel, maintenance, et cetera. And it's a, it's a few dollars a day. And what it effectively allows somebody to do is take the train into a city that has a train line, and instead, and then take that bus for the day to their place of work. You can use it during lunch to go out with coworkers. It could be single riders who want to spend $5 a day and don't want to have another car in their family, or it could be a dedicated bus for a group of employees. But I recently helped connect one of my former employers with the PACE VanGo program, and it really worked well because we couldn't afford a dedicated bus from the train station for people who came in from Chicago. So anyway, it's worth thinking about, but this is something that, no pun intended, is on demand. If there is a demand and a request for it, the dri, the person who's driving the bus needs to go through some certification and background checks, obviously. And then, once that happens, PACE will provide a van that works kind of like a Zipcar. You punch a code in, and you just take it for the day. So that's something I wanted to expand on a little bit. All right, moving on. In 2025, we will complete PACE's network restructuring plan called Revision. You have information on Revision? Next week, there will be a ton of materials posted on the PACE Revision, on our PACE website under the Revision site. I would really encourage everybody to read through the executive summary and the detailed information on McHenry County. We know that travel patterns have changed since the pandemic, and PACE is going to continue to adjust to meet the needs of the reason, region. And I want to make sure everybody's clear that this revision plan for PACE is our view on what we could do in the next 20 or 30, over the next 10, 20, 30 years. So this is effectively a long-range strategic plan for where we'll put fixed route. Where do we need Dial-A-Ride? What's the right answer? And to play with this, we've hired a consultant that's looked at if we got the additional funds that brought PACE up to the minimum of where other similar transport, transit companies in the United States are, what would we do with the money? And to give some reference point, there aren't a lot of good reference point. New Jersey, actually, the state of New Jersey is probably the best reference point for the Chicago-PACE area. Interestingly, New Jersey is going through a process of breaking up their centralized regional planning authority into bus, train. That's a whole nother story related, you know? So again, some, and a region that did it is now undoing it. So I think that's quite interesting. But New Jersey's a pretty good reference, and their funding is 50% higher. The funding, actually, if you look across the country or even at other cities outside, like in Canada, it's anywhere between 50% or up to 300% more than the funding we provide. So there is a funding shortfall independent of the relief funds and fiscal cliff. But to get, get input on what it could look like, I'm not confident we'll get all of that money, but we do need to have a discussion about where do we want fixed route if we do get more money? If we build it, will they come? Will riders take the bus instead of their car to the train station if we put a route there? Where are the underserved areas, the low-income areas? What's the impact of the University Center and the new Motorola facility being filled up? We have to think about what's happening now and what that means for the future. And I will say, I'm concerned that we're not getting sufficient input from McHenry County. We had our first municipal briefing last week that I attended, and there was only one representative from McHenry County of any of the cities on the call. That's not okay. That means I need to do my job and call everybody one at a time. But I would encourage everybody to get involved because if we don't have a voice, we will be told what transit looks like in McHenry County rather than being able to inform it.
So you mean the municipalities have not had?
Yes, we're not getting, so, so I need to start reaching out to all the mayors, but I want, I'd like everyone's help on this board. Just starting to spread the word that the coming weeks are the time to provide input into the revision plan. There is still plenty of opportunity to do that. And I will call out one thing that, if you look at the information, and then I'll get back to my closing remarks. The revision plan, the documents don't do a good job of calling out that in the, in the scenarios of what if we got 50% more funding, which is the ideal? There's a ridership and a coverage model. I'm sure we won't land at either extreme. It'll be, would be somewhere in the middle. But if we, if you follow ridership and you looked at the region as a whole, we wouldn't get any of that money. So fortunately, the consultant has done this in such a way that every county would see a 50% increase in funding, and then what would we do with it? The coverage model actually gives Coller Counties disproportionately more of the funding, up to 200% in McHenry County. So again, if we get any more money, this could be transformational for us, and I just really want to emphasize that. Okay, that's enough on, on revision. So I'll continue to talk a little bit now about technology. We obviously continue to invest in technology, which is critically important. We're enhancing the Transit App, which enables seamless trip planning before, between PACE's fixed route, On Demand, Paratransit, and VanGo services, along with CTA and Metra. So this helps you figure out what is my best route to get from point A to point B. In fact, PACE received the Center for Digital Government Special District Project Award for the Groundbaking Mobility as a Service Pilot Program. The award recognizes PACE's innovative approach to improving public transportation access and simplifying the rider experience. We also introduced a new TripCheck mobile app. Now suburban ADA paratransit riders, as well as users of PACE-operated Dial-A-Ride services can use TripCheck to view information and cancel trips. Ventra fare payment options are available for riders of PACE Paratransit and PACE Demand Response Services and other local Dial-A-Ride service. This includes MC Ride. The 2025 Suburban Service Capital Program totaling $78.8 million is primarily for new buses and support facilities and reinforces our commitment to sustainability. Last year, I reported on our commitment to operate a fully zero-emission fleet by the year 2040. We're on target to meet those public, published goals. We continue to work with bus manufacturers to increase their production capacity, which has been a constraint. We're working with ComEd to improve the capacity of the power grid and to obtain sustainable funding for infrastructure upgrades to our facilities. Securing funding to start these improvements is a vital first step in a successful fleet transition. As for the transitions, we have debuted our inaugural battery electric bus that's now operational, and we're preparing a second, we're preparing a second electric bus to be introduced this year. Our North Division Electrification Expansion Project in Waukegan continues to progress. Phase one of the project is currently designed, which includes the exterior charging infrastructure and site improvements, including a bus canopy. We anticipate breaking ground in 2025. We also continue to make meaningful project on, on other sustainability goals throughout the region, including phase one on the Southwest Division Electrification Expansion Project in our Garage and Bridge View, River Division Electrification Expansion Project for our Garage in Elgin. And it's worth noting that some of the services operating in McHenry County are based out of our River Division. And in 2025, we'll continue to purchase new buses, including fixed route, electric vehicle hybrid replacement buses, over-the-road coach replacement buses for the I-55 Bus on the Shoulder service, paratransit replacement vehicles. And we are very grateful this year to Congressman Bill Foster as PACE was awarded a community project funding from Congressman Bill Foster of $1 million to purchase five electric, battery-electric paratransit vehicles to be used right here in McHenry County. You will recall, the PACE provides ADA services throughout McHenry County and the entire PACE service area. For 2025, the regional ADA paratransit budget's balanced to the RTA funding levels of 26, 266 million dollars. There are no fare increases planned for 2025. ADA paratransit ridership has already surpassed pre-pandemic levels, as I indicated, by almost 8%. And so far, PACE has provided 2.8 million ADA rides in the city and more than 625,000 rides in the suburbs. In 2025, ADA paratransit ridership's expected to grow by another 4.5%. We've also seen growth in the use of the Ride Share Access Program, and we will be collaborating with you to expand the service model within the county and with your MC Ride Connect program, and I've talked a little bit about that earlier. Additionally, in 2025, we'll provide support for demand response services, including county-level grants that are intended to implement or enhance the county-wide service. We're providing $200,000, as we have in previous years, to McHenry County. And I want to thank Chairman Bueller and, and all of you and the county staff for our great partnership, as always, providing and expanding Dial-A-Ride in McHenry County. We also introduce free rides for ADA paratransit riders on PACE fixed bus service, which will continue in 2025. And that's, again, I'm not sure getting enough advertising, but if you know, if you are in contact with paratransit riders, if they have access to a fixed route service, that's free. To deliver, to deliver the services, PACE continues to make considerable progress recruiting operations and maintaining staff, which has been an ongoing challenge post-pandemic. We now offer CDL training courses in partnership with community colleges throughout the reading, region, and have initiated that conversation with McHenry County College recently. Pace in that, in those, with that project, PACE covers the costs of tuition and other expenses associated with obtaining the CDL permit court. And, and that's a pretty terrific thing. So I'm hoping to see that at McHenry County College. Additionally, we'll continue to host weekly Hire on the Spot events every Thursday. These recruitment efforts help us hire operations staff, which, of course, enables us to implement many of the service improvements that I've mentioned. In closing, even as PACE's 2025 budget is balanced, I want to reiterate, the regional transportation system's facing a projected operating shortfall of more than $730 million annually, starting in 2026. PACE has shown incredible creativity and flexibility in attempting to serve as many people as possible with the resources available to us. With additional funding, we could do a lot more for those we serve, particularly in McHenry County. However, PACE's ability to innovate and provide critical mobility for for communities cannot happen without transformative investments in public transportation. Public transportation plays an essential role in the lives of millions of riders across the region, but the system has been drastically underfunded for decades. We continue to advocate, and hope you will as well, for adequate funding that will not only allow us to maintain the current system, but also build a modern, resilient transit network for generations to come. Thank you, Chairman Bueller. Thank you, members of the board, for your continued support of Pace. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
I just have one question. Thank you for being here, Erin, of course. And back to COVID funds again. I'm just, did you, did you say that 40% of your budget would be covered by COVID funding?
No, of the, of the 2.87.
For 2025?
Yeah, for 2025, of the 287.5 million, 41.4.
41.4, okay. And then, the reason I'm asking this question is that I'm, I'm just curious about how much of it will be sustainable when we get into 2026 as far as the Pace budget goes?
Yeah, I don't have that with me. There is some, there's, there's some information in the detailed budget, but, but like Metra and CTA, we will run out of that money in 2026. And it will mean service cutbacks, buses running less frequently, maybe shutting down some fixed routes that don't have optimal ridership. It, it, it won't be good news.
So some of the projects that we'll be able to fund in 2025?
Yeah, again, the capital projects aren't, this is an operating budget, ongoing service, just to reiterate the previous conversation. It's, it's, the capital improvement projects come from different sources of funding. This is service.
And I, I like Van Gogh. Is that the painter Van Gogh?
It's not spelled the same way, but it's kind of, kind of a catchy name. I didn't come up with it, but yeah.
That's a great project. Now, is that only available to employers?
No, anybody, anybody can do it. So again, there's great information on the Pace website about the Van Gogh program, a great brochure that explains there's different options. I'm happy to provide you with more information on that, but I think it's a pretty neat option. Again, I thought it was good enough that I recommended it to my previous employer, and they love it, so.
Thank you so much.
Mr. Shorten?
Yes, thank you. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
All right, thank you. I just have some technical problems. Thank you for the presentation. I'm going to ask a question that, that I asked a year ago, and I did get an answer, and I'm just wondering if anything has changed. And I apologize, I have some technical issues. How much, how much funding goes towards dial-a-ride?
You have to look at, I don't know. Do you want to give me the exact number over there?
Pace provides about $2.5 million.
Thanks, 2.5 million.
Okay. 2.5 million goes to dial-a-rides specifically?
Yes. I mean, that's, mhm.
And then the, the, the route buses?
I, I don't have the specific McHenry County number. Maybe Scott can pull it up. I think, you know, I remember from your question last year, it's a question I ask every year, and I'm sure all of you do, is, are we getting back the money we've paid in in taxpayer dollars? And we check that every year. And that's why you see a $200,000 grant, because without that, we wouldn't be.
And, and I absolutely appreciate that we're getting the money back. My concern is with those route buses, that they're driving around empty.
Yeah, I think that, you know, I hear that. I've heard that from other people as well. It's important to remember that, you know, if you see a fixed route empty bus, it may be that they're going between hubs, right? Or returning back to the bus garage. So it can be a little bit misleading, but certainly, we would like to see buses that are more full. And that's one of the reasons why the ADA paratransit riders we're offering for free, because that's a cost-effective way to use the existing infrastructure.
And I don't expect you have it here, but can we get ridership numbers on those route buses? Because every Pace bus that I drive by that looks like a route bus to me has nobody on it.
Okay, happy to get that.
And my concern, and I know we've talked about this before, and I know that Pace is going through the revision process. It seems like a lot of money goes to route buses that nobody rides. And then the third component you talked about earlier was the Uber, Lyft program?
Uh huh. It's actually Uber and U-Serve, but yes?
Okay, U-Serve, thank you. The, the funding for those rides comes from Pace or comes from the county?
It comes from the, the money that Pace provides. So that $200,000 could be used for the RAP program, the reimbursement to riders for RAP.
Okay. All right, thank you. That's all I had. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Erin.
Thank you for your time.
Okay, moving on to new business. Do any members have items from next Tuesday's agenda they'd like to remove for discussion? Mr. Scala?
I have three. 10B.1, 13A is an apple,
Okay. Mr. Kearns?
You already got it, thank you.
Mr. Gotamaller?
The budget.
17B.1 and 2. Okay, 10B.1, Mr. Scala?
Yes, 10B.1 is a zoning request to change from E5 Estate to B3. It was denied 7 to 0 in the ZBA. And Jim and I are both the representatives of this area and would strongly encourage the board to also reject this request. It does not fit the area. I could go through all the different aspects by which I feel this doesn't meet the requirements, but if you read the transcript, I think you'll also have that understanding also. I did ask the state attorney's office just curiously if the board didn't even make a motion, because I know it has to be in the affirmative, right? So technically, we would all want to vote no once it was motioned in the affirmative. But I guess I asked the state attorney's office if we even have to have a motion, in the sense that you can request a motion, but if no one says they make a motion, then would it just simply die for lack of motion? And, and I don't know. They were looking that research up to see if, because Adam had a concern that if we didn't actually take action to deny it, that it would still be sitting out there. So they're still figuring that part out, and I don't need an answer right now, but, oh, we do have an answer?
Go ahead.
Hello, everyone. Good morning. Thank you so much. Again, Kyle Brewett from the state attorney's office. I did have an opportunity to, to do some cursory research while we were listening to our presentations this morning. I, I believe that there wouldn't be, it would be considered non-action. It wouldn't be, if a motion's not done, as we all know, if a motion's not generated and seconded, it, it would die and therefore not be considered. So no action would be taken. But then we fall into that 180-day window of, of whether or not it's a non-action item. So maybe it might fall in, but this would be up to the, the chairman at this point, as the guardian essentially of the agenda, where that would exactly fit, maybe under zoning unfinished business, and it would be a recurring theme. So I, I think there's, there's tangentially possibly a challenge there, like, but, but I don't want to go too far down that rabbit hole. I mean, ultimately, it's.
If, if the answer is not clear, I don't want to make a problem out of it.
No, the answer's clear that it would be non-action, if that makes any sense, right? But where it would proceed from there is.
Is not clear, and I would rather just vote, vote it down and call it a day. So thank you for looking into that.
Of course, thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Smith?
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, regarding this, I just wanted to point out and that Coral Township had submitted a formal letter of objection. And as Mr. Scala said, this is written in the affirmative. So if we want to agree with the ZBA in denying this rezoning request, we would be voting no.
Mr. Kearns?
So agreeing with Mr. Scala and Mr. Smith, this is something we should all vote no on. This, this, this particular petition does not fit anywhere within our, our zoning, and, and it would not be fair. There was a huge opposition to this in letter writing and signatures. So we need to back our, our ZBA on this one and residents. Thank you.
Okay, see no further questions on this item. Mr. Scala, 13A?
So 13A is a resolution terminating the non-dedicated subdivision road maintenance program. There was also a resolution that is 16B.2.24 that would do appropriation as a small amount for this year as a one-time. And I didn't pull that because that went through finance, and, and I agree with that. The 13A, I apologize, I had to leave transportation early, so I was, I was there for the beginning of the conversation, but not for all of the conversation. And so I, I do, this is a shift from the operations that we had been doing, and, and you can see in your board packet the old resolution that started this. And I don't, I'm conflicted, because although I have issues with this program to go from, you know, a funding the program to not funding the program and not having any time for the people that would be impacting to be able to share their concerns or thoughts on it, to me is, is where I have the issue. I think the, the, also, the write-up on the resolution states that the amount that would be saved every year isn't, to me, not quite accurate unless something changed from the time I was there to not. It's, it's what is budgeted, but not what is actually spent every year. And because of that match with the township, and I, I apologize, I don't remember the exact numbers that were actually being spent every year, but it was, it was less than 100,000 that we actually spent every single year. So it's just, to me, I, I always, I always err on the side of giving residents a chance to come and voice their concern about something when we make a change in the process. And, and ultimately, we have the right and the authority to make that change. But to do that without any chance for public input, and perhaps maybe looking at the program and doing it differently, again, with the match with the township, and, and the residents put in money too. So it's not, I, I don't want to say that they don't. I, I just don't know that this resolution is the right thing at the right time, I guess.
Mr. Shorten, do you have something to add, or is your hand up from before?
It's, it's up from before. I'll take it down, sorry.
Ms. Meshes?
Thank you. I was at a transportation meeting, even though I'm not on that committee, actually because of the non-dedicated roads this past month. And the resolution of 13A, that came up kind of quickly, in my opinion, in transportation. And I was kind of surprised, not kind of, I'm very surprised to see that there were no public comment about this, given that McHenry Township and Algonquin Township were very impacted by some of the changes that occurred and who they were funding this year. And I was wondering if anybody from McDot had, had feedback on, did the townships, did you hear, did you get any feedback from anybody on the townships? Because although two of the five townships that have been using this funding were, were somewhat engaged in the discussion, the other three, I haven't heard from. So, no, okay, there's a head no. No, they're, they have not contacted. So I'm, do they know about it? Did, was there any outreach to the five townships that are, that are being affected by this? No. Well, two of them were. Two of the five were there, but the other three were not. I would, as I'm leaving the boards shortly, I would have thought, I agree with Mike Scala, that there wasn't any time really for the townships to have outreach to their people affected, and so we don't really know the impact. I learned briefly in the last three months about this program and some of the history with these non-dedicated roads. And although philosophy, in philosophy, I would agree that, that paying for private roads really isn't something that maybe our entity should be doing. The way they view their roads is, is different than what I would have thought a private road looked like. So for instance, one of the roads I came across, it's far more developed than the road I live on. My road is a municipal road, but it doesn't have, it doesn't have sidewalks, it doesn't have gutters, it's not even very wide. But somehow, that is considered a municipal road, and this other road in my, in my town is not. And I think maybe the problem comes down to how are those roads, how, they need to have time to think about how are their roads going to be readapt, re-changed into? Because I think when we think about a private road, we might think of a gravel road, and they're not all gravel roads. So I would suggest that the board delay this resolution until there's time to, for the public to, to respond.
Mr. Kunkel?
I'm not in for a delay. I'd like to move on this, because it's a little more complicated than that, because we have been, this was a voluntary funding from McHenry County, and we have been paying out funds to roads that did not qualify. So that's a problem, because we're using taxpayers' money on other people's roads who don't qualify. And another thing, even voluntarily, we're using all of taxpayers' money to fund just very few private roads, and especially that these people chose to buy properties, homes, et cetera, on these roads at a reduced price because they were not a public road. And at the time, they thought, this is great, we'll save some money, we'll do this through an HOA-type program. But now to fall back on us and say, all the rest of the people who didn't get a reduction on the cost of our homes because we bought on public roads, that this is now some of our, how our burden, I do also feel for everyone who's been trapped in this situation. But we have been doing something, I won't use the word illegal, but technically not correct through the county, even though it was voluntary. We were doing this for roads that did not meet that criterion. So this is kind of a way of cleaning this up, putting this all to bed, and then certainly, we can look at a new, a better thought-out program for these. But right now, what we're doing is two right, two wrongs are not making a right here. Thank you.
Mr. Kearns?
Yes, at committee, this was discussed a lot. If you went back and listened to it, you know, every single member, we, we gave a chance, every single member to put in their opinion on this. And, and, and this is where it came to, having to write up this resolution and bringing it forward. The money that we're spending is on a few, I think we were down to, to 10 miles that, of road or less, that, that we're actually, can use the funds on. And a lot of the roads that we've been funding over the years are not qualified roads after the, the new process from the state came through. So, so this is going to clean it up, and this will end it. Those funds, I would rather also, that we use instead of a few taxpayers, and, and Mr., Mr. Sager really brought this up, and he's much more eloquent than I am at this explanation. But, but we're using these funds for just a few people, where residents, where our bridges and everything else in the county, I think are really important that we, we're able to keep some of that funding and maybe allocate it to that. It's going to get tighter and tighter here on our budgets as we go down the road. And we need to, to service the majority of the people that keep our infrastructure in place for our county roads and, and township roads. Because everybody drives across township bridge, not just the people that live in that township. So we need to kind of make some decisions on that down the road here also. So thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no further comments, 16B.25, Mr. Scala?
Yeah, I just wanted to make the board aware. So this is a resolution. We are basically borrowing mon, money from the general fund and giving it to the FICA fund. So typically speaking, in any particular year, Kerry has the autonomy to be able to loan funds for. Carrie has the autonomy to be able to loan funds for funds that are lacking in being able to pay, in this case, the FICA expense that we have after every payroll. And when she does that, she does give the finance committee, you know, a heads-up that she's doing it. But as long as that money is paid back by the end of the fiscal year, then, you know, it's not a board actionable item. In this particular case, because the FICA fund is not able to pay back that money by the end of the fiscal year, and because it was depleted to the point where we had to make this loan, this is a resolution to make that and codify it over fiscal years, which is what needs to happen appropriately. So I just wanted to make the board aware that's what this is. And there is a plan to have it paid back, you know. But that is, if you remember going back to the whole budget thing, that was why we were shifting some of the levy back to FICA, was in order to try and help that fund recover from where it's at right now and then build up a little bit of fund balance to be able to pay back the general fund over the next several years. So just as an FYI.
Thank you. Mr. Gotamaller, 17B1 and 2. I guess we'll take them together, right?
Yes, that'd be fine. So I spent a little time since the last time we were here last month looking at some numbers, and staff helped me immensely on this because I wouldn't have had a lot of these back going 10 years. But we are good stewards of the McHenry County taxpayer and the citizens we represent. And they expect some essential government services from us, which we do and we provide. But they expect us to do it without wasting their money. And so I look back, and I want to talk about big numbers first. Just the last 10 years. If we look at what we saved in the last 10 years, our current budget in 2014 was $78 million in property taxes is what we took. This budget, as proposed, is $65 million. That's a $13 million reduction in the last 10 years of what we're using, taking for property taxes from our citizens. What would it have been? My next question was if we would done and follow the school systems examples, where they take the maximum out every year. To give you an idea, had we done that, this year, our tax take would have been $100 million. Instead, it's $65 million. Overall savings in the last 10 years that this county board has saved on property taxes that we did not tax our citizens on is $159 million. That's two and a half years of what we actually take. If we're given that $159 million at the rate we're currently spending it, we wouldn't tax for two and a half years. That just goes to show what we have done. So I then compared it a little bit to what the schools did. I looked at four districts. I looked at 200 because it's a unit school district. I looked at 47 and 155 because they're some of the largest districts. And I looked at 158. The numbers are somewhat shocking. District 200, in 2014, taxed $59 million in property taxes. This year, they're at $69 million. They've increased their take by $10 million. Okay, well, that's fine. But in the meantime, their student population reduced by 280. And by the way, that's the best of the four. District 47, it has a reduced student population of 533. Oh, I should tell you about the reduced populations. I can only get records from 2018 to today. So I don't have what they were in 2015. I have 2018. They're down 533 students. They've increased property taxes in the last 10 years. Their new number is $15 million. To give you an idea of that, when we were taxing $78 million in 2014, District 47 was taxing $72 million. Today, District 47 is at $86 million, and we're at 65. So if you wonder in Crystal Lake where your tax savings went, that's exactly where it went. And that'd be fine if we didn't also have 155. 155 has a reduced student population of 779 since 2018. But they have an increased property tax of $14 million. If that wasn't enough, we can look at 158. They've got a reduced population of 1,100 students. They have an increased property tax burden of $20 million in the same 10 years. So I don't know what... I don't know. I'm not talking about the level of education or anything like that. I think the schools do a great job of educating students. I am wondering how you can reduce the number of students and have that much increased demand in the last 10 years. So those are big numbers. The numbers we also have to look at is what did that do to the person whose home? We picked $350,000 home, not because of any great number. I don't know if that's the average home or not, but that seemed a good place to start. If you, in 2014, that $350,000 home paid a $692 tax bill to the county. If we'd inflated our tax rate, like the other schools have done, we would be paying $853 today. In actual fact, you will pay $565 today. So if you had that $350,000 home, and you've looked at what you've saved year after year from here, you've saved $1,200 to the $350,000 homeowner. So we've now got a discussion as to what are we going to do to make certain we stay balanced? We are good stewards. We don't have any debt. And we've just listed the three budget proposals or budget projections for the metro system and the RTA. They're hundreds of millions of dollars behind. We have no debt. We've managed to keep it that way. We have two contracts that are currently on for our meeting approved with unions just recently. Look at those contracts. They're not in this budget. But over the next three years, they're going to increase this budget by $4 million. We're not going to not have a jail. We're going to have a jail. We're going to need correctional officers. We've managed to maintain and keep our correctional officers because we actually pay them. Lake County is currently paying us because they can't get anybody to work for them. Right? Again, we go back to which makes more sense. So I am looking at this board and saying, folks, as much as I'd love to have a zero budget and not have any taxes and be able to do all this, it's not magic. We have an obligation to make certain we're providing the services at the least amount of money, and we are doing that. If you look at the last 10 years, we've done it, and we've done it for everybody around. I never dreamed when I started this that I was going to find $1,200 in tax savings to the average $350,000 home. But that's what we have. And we should be proud of that fact, not listening to the fact that we haven't saved enough. We've saved a lot. And would I like to save more? Sure. But I also want to make certain that we don't go into debt and that we can pay our bills. Mr. Tryon, our chairman, years, many years ago and before I was on this board, told me what happened to him the first day he became chairman. He was sworn in on the December morning. He went back in the back room, and the county treasurer and the county auditor came to him that same morning, within an hour, and said, "We have a problem. You have to issue tax anticipation warrants by May because otherwise, we can't pay payroll." Now, we're not in that dire shape, but it's not responsible to be in that dire shape. We've taken 30 years to get ourselves in a position that we don't have any debts. We don't have any, you know... Yeah, we've increased our budget because we have other revenues, and we've also saved money. The ARPA funds are there. Those are things are there. That's not property taxes. And the things that people see in HARP the most are property taxes. And we've done our job in lowering them, and we're going to keep doing it. Thank you.
Ms. Greenow?
I really appreciate all of the work that Member Gotamaller put into the looking at the budget and the taxes. Clearly, last Tuesday was a mandate from the citizens in McHenry County. And we are at a point where, right now, the average unemployment claim for our local office was six a month. It is now 20 a week. People have had a loss of income, loss of employment. Businesses have had lost revenue. And to say that we can look over 10 years and look at our levy as somehow we have saved taxes from our residents, we have increased the motor fuel tax in the last year. We have increased the sales tax in the last year. And just a quick question. What was the projected motor fuel tax versus the actual motor fuel tax from last year, please?
Who were you asking?
Yes.
I said, who?
Hello?
DOT had projected $3 million more in revenue per year with the MFT increase, and that's about what we're expecting to see this year. So it's about $3 million a year.
Okay, but the projected amount last year was... We were... We actually received more than had been projected in the budget last year? I mean, we did. I mean, I looked at it. I just was asking you to state it.
No, I don't... So the MFT took effect January 1, but there's a three-month lag before we start collecting it. And so this year, in 2024, we're not going to see that full $3 million because there's a three-month delay. We're going to see nine-twelfths of that probably. But in 2025, our estimate is about $3 million more revenue in 2025.
So ample amount to cover... So we don't have a revenue problem. We don't have an expense problem this year. Also, too, I just think that, you know, we had... We transferred. We switched. We moved. We shifted the taxpayers' taxes to motor fuel tax and sales tax. And we owe them. They mandated. They clearly spoke when they voted last week. No tax increases. And we can do this. We have ample reserves. We have ample revenue. And so we can't say, we can't look at what our levy has been and what happened in past situations. We can look at what our situation is now. Yes, we're in a very good position. We have ample reserves. And so we need to listen to the taxpayers, respect them, respect what they're going through. As I said, six unemployment claims a month, now 20 a week. So we're not through this storm. People are hurting. They're on fixed incomes. They're retired. They're paying more in property taxes and insurance than they were for their original mortgages. And then, of course, we have the taxed on unrealized net gains from capital gains from the increased assessments on properties. I mean, it just hits people in every way. As far as the accountability of the other taxing bodies, that's not what we were elected for here. We are elected for the county board and our levy. We have to cut these taxes.
Mr. Kunkel?
Yeah, I really do appreciate all the work Joe did, and I do understand it. McHenry County has done a great job. But what we have to remember, as Terry said, those increases in school taxes are falling directly on the backs of our constituents. We also just went through an unprecedented pandemic. And as an institution, as a government body, we received a huge amount of money from the federal government via the ARPA dollars. That was basically to shore us up and make sure we can get through this. Those were, we can't kid ourselves, those were taxpayers' dollars also that provided that money. Our citizens did not get directly, most of them didn't even get indirectly, those ARPA dollars. They're all looking at the expenses. They got all of the bad side of the pandemic, from illness all the way through to inflation to this point. What we've been asking for, I asked for it last year. I'm asking this year, one year. And we can do it in McHenry County. We've proved it over 10 years. We can do this. One year to give the tax-paying citizens a break. And we can do it. We've proven over 10 years fiscally. This is a great, great county. We can do it. It's a small ask for this year. Thank you.
Seeing no further comment? Pete, you got a report for us today?
Thank you. You know, on your agenda is the AI policy, and we didn't pull that. But I did just want to acknowledge that in the leadership of Alicia Schuler and all of our AI task force in putting that together. It was a good example of how our offices and departments to come together and share ideas. And we're going to continue to work on this because we know artificial intelligence is with us, and it's going to be more and more part of our operations moving ahead. I also wanted to acknowledge the work of the Sheriff's Office, Sheriff Tadelman, HR Suzanne Zibert, and the leadership of FOP Unit 1 and 2. We had... The negotiations went fast this year, faster than we even anticipated because both sides, I think, have a lot of respect for one another, and we've got mature contracts, and we got down to business. And I appreciate the leadership of both sides, and I'm proud of what we're doing there. So I'm looking forward to a new agreement there. I also want to acknowledge that as you're in now, I'm doing evaluations with all of our, not many of our appointed department heads. And I just wanted to express my appreciation to all of them. And I want you to be so proud of the work that they're doing as we look back at what we did last year and then look forward to our goals for next year. It's exciting. I did want to note that we've had some communication already with Shaylan, and she's going to be reaching out to Aaron Smith and talking about how to get municipalities engaged in this PACE revision plan. So we'll work on that. And finally, Adam was able to offer a position, the new position of Community Development Director yesterday, to Sarah Poznitz, and she's accepted. So we're going to be soon welcoming her on board.